The federal mining lab. Yeah, it was the R. Kelly I want to suffer. Since I'm getting up. No, I don't know. No idea. You know what they are. Like a bad. I just stopped talking.
When he comes back, I'll tell him.
She. Oh, wow. Okay.
Toby can't make her stay.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yes, yes.
I know. That's all I know.
I know it's a class. It's that class that they do. And so he's taking that glass.
Yeah.
Yes, but it sounds like a worthwhile thing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's true. Fantastic. How are you doing?
Nice to meet you. Thank you again. Sometimes I feel like I should have more questions, but you do such a good job of anticipating all my dumb numbers.
So do you have a? You have yours in there. And we have yours here. Oh, so do you want one of these?
Oh, that's okay.
Just the agenda for.
There and it's not the same man when I go.
Sure, yes, you can control that.
I feel you, man.
I'm still there. I'm still around.
I try to do that.
Yes. Yes.
We went along with.
All the legislative stuff.
I try and know I haven't, but yeah.
We've got tons more upstairs. Well, hello. How are you doing?
You know. I just had my head around things a little bit better. Only been on this.
Yeah, she's here. Asha Stone, yes, she's here.
Do I have a four year old?
Okay, good. That's what I would do. White is much better than white tea. I thank you. Okay. So the only thing I want to ask a question about tonight is good.
I don't know what it is.
So, so. I want to know more about good sports.
She was a minister's wife and you just.
Yeah. For her time. She was a great.
Everybody's like, so when's your downtime? Never. Never, never. I need a vacation.
Oh.
It took me like a big detour.
So I think I'm. I'm blind. I don't have an agenda. I can't log into diligent forward. All right, I think we are ready to get started. We're going to officially call the meeting to order. I'm showing 5:04. And we will start with our roll call followed by a pledge of allegiance. Debbie, could you lead us in roll call?
Yes, sir. Dr. Roberts.
Present.
Secretary Jerome. President.
Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
Trustee Dukowski.
Present.
Trustee White.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Jones.
Present.
Trustee Fiddler.
Yeah.
We have a chair of quorum.
Thank you. All right, let's stand up to.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
No, we do not.
Well, we will go to our first agenda item, which is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And then let's go to approval of the minutes for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting for February 6, 2025, I mean, February 6, 2025. Can we do those as a bundle, Jerry, or do we need to do those one at a time, each of the?
One at a. One at a time.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the Finance and Audit Committee meeting minutes for February 6, 2025?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All right, call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, do we have a motion to approve the regular board of meeting agenda minutes for March 13, 2025?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Minutes approved. And then we will start with the Chair's report, which is me. I know Nate sent out an email. I know many of you know, but Nate is in Carson. He had to have a procedure, so he's there recovering. So we just want to continue to wish him well. And I know we have some board members who were, who terms were renewed, so we want to congratulate Kate. And then also, we want to welcome our new board members. So maybe we'll let each of our board members maybe introduce themselves and we just welcome you to the board. We'll start to my left.
Brittany Bala Muffiedler. I am a born and raised Las Vegas. My first library, I was actually as a page at the Clark County Library, and now I am a tenured professor in the university libraries at UNLV, and I'm very excited to be here.
Welcome. You're up. Oh, did you?
Yes.
Yeah, Asha and I did our.
Okay. All right, well, I think we're all set. So, and I know that I was reminded this is library week, so we just want to make sure we continue to support our libraries and, you know, we know the important role we play in our various communities nationally and globally, and many communities really depend on this very vital and important resource to be able to do just the basic things that many of us take it, take for granted in our daily, daily lives. So we just want to thank all of our library affiliate staff and volunteers and partners that do what you do to make it possible for so many in our community to be able to access these important resources and thrive. So we appreciate all that you do every day. And so next we will see, do we have anyone present from the Las Vegas County Library Foundation? All right, I see Fred coming down.
Good evening, especially to the new board trustees. It's a great board to be on. I'm in, I'm here on behalf of chairperson Felipe Ortiz. He was unable to make it tonight, so basically we just wanted to update you regarding the contract that we have, that we're still working on, but I believe that it should be done completely soon. Jerry probably has an update on that. We're working also on the, the job description for our CEO of the foundation. We expect that to be done and probably before July 1st. And those are the things that we're working on right now, and we're meeting with our board in the next board meeting. And at that next board meeting, hopefully we talk about the, the approve the job description and basically the salary. Are there any questions?
I see trustee Sanchez.
Yes, thank you. Hi, Fred, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you doing?
Good, good. So how has the conversations been going with the board members regarding the transition? Are they supportive of it? Do they have any questions regarding it? What's the general consensus?
The foundation in general is positive about what's going on. It's taken longer than we had hoped. It's taken longer than we had hoped. So we're hoping that we're to be able to wrap up. We were hoping to have the contract wrapped up before the signing of the last new market tax credits that we're a part of.
So you're, you're saying that you think that you're going to have the job description and the salary range? And when's your next foundation meeting?
It says May, but we might have one in, we probably have one next month in May.
Okay, thank you.
Could you explain the portion about the new markets tax credit?
Well, the, the foundation, because the library district is a government entity, you cannot, as a government entity, accept new market tax credits. The foundation was in, had been created decades before. And in order for the foundation to be, to accept new market tax credit or be a part of it, we had to get a law changed up in Carson City. And the law allows the foundation to, on behalf, become a intermediary. We, we get the funds and then we give it back to you. So that's all we have to do. I mean, we don't do anything else other than that. Without us, you couldn't do it. Oh, without us or any other nonprofit, you could not do this.
So, but it's not going to hold up the library building.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
No, no. We're on the same page right now.
Okay.
For clarity's sake, the new market tax credit agreement is already signed and done. The operating agreement is what you're talking about, which is.
We have nothing to do with that.
Right, yeah, the operating agreement is a separate.
We have, we can only sign the, the agreement. The money has to come through us. If we don't transfer the money, nothing happens. So we, you, you do all the signing, the paperwork, we do all the transfers. It comes to us and then we transfer it back to you.
I, I understand, and there is no hesitation, no obstacle, nothing.
No.
Okay, that's okay.
Now, this is a great program that we put together when I was Chief Financial Officer. I'm a big proponent of new market tax credits.
Can you tell me how much the foundation through new market tax credits is giving towards the new library? I, I think, I don't want to guess. I think I have the number, but I want to.
We're not giving anything.
No, no, I'm saying that how much is being received for the new.
Your chief financial.
Yeah, we defer to.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair.
To answer that exact question on the amounts.
Yeah, trustee Sanchez, I believe you're asking how much the net benefit overall will be for the library districts West Las Vegas project, which we've already secured $6.5 million in funding from the first round of federal funds, and we're seeking another $6 million in funding in both federal and state funding. And the library district as a sponsor of the West Las Vegas project makes a contribution into what we call the New Markets Investment Fund to the, also passed on to the library district foundation, who then makes a loan to another nonprofit corporation that I'll be explaining in a little more detail later on the agenda. I think this is good timing because I wanted to give an update to or provide more information for the newer trustees here, but I hope that answers the question as far as the foundation plays the role of a pass through entity, a channel for which the district can invest funds into the new markets program, which yields the, the net benefit of up to $13 million total, going through a complicated stacks, a tax structure that involves our affiliates, our partners like the library district foundation and the other nonprofit corporation that Mr. James is alluding to, known as the Qualic Bee. Again, I'll speak more to that, but is that the?
Yep.
Information you're looking for?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, we're just a pastor.
No, I understand that, but I also understand that the library district would not be able to receive those funds if the foundation was not here, because you cannot, I don't believe the library district can receive new market tax credits without the foundation.
Well, without a profit.
Correct.
And we have a, we have.
I mean, we don't have another nonprofit right now.
Correct.
Yeah.
But we, it's, it's set up so that any nonprofit can represent the library district. And that's the way it was set up when we went up there to have the law changed. We didn't try to, you know, cap the library to one organization, so the, the library has the, has this choice of who they would like to do this through. It's just that we're more convenient and we've done it. And you're, and the people, your investors are familiar with the library foundation, so those, those things help, because we've done this twice before.
But just for clarity, the operational agreement that you guys are working on doesn't have anything to do with the current committed new market tax credits agreement, which is already.
And that's correct. That's correct. It should, in my opinion, but it doesn't.
Got it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No, thank you. We look forward to hearing what happens at your main meeting or if you have another meeting prior to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will, that will conclude the Chair's report, and we will transition to agenda item number six, the library reports led by CFO, Aresto.
Thanks, Ken. Dr. Rogers. I'll present the information that Executive Director Watson wanted to bring the board up to speed for, along with the community. He also wanted to acknowledge a library, National Library Week, and to thank everyone here from the trustees to staff and the community for their ongoing support. He also made presentations to Clark County and the city of Las Vegas, informing them of the library, its operations, and, you know, the context that the National Library Week has with the, with our operations. So other than that, the executive direct support is presented as is, but he also did want me to provide an overview, a brief summary of the discussion had earlier this week with the Finance and Audit Committee. Staff presented the overall figures for the preliminary budget that is due to the state of Nevada by April 15th. And we wanted to emphasize our budget approach and how it affects our budgeting for this upcoming fiscal year due to the risks and other challenges that we're facing this fiscal year, especially with respect to federal funding. We just talked about the new markets tax credit program and the significant amounts of federal funding that is being contributed to the library district for the West Las Vegas project, and there are other risks involved. So I informed the finance committee about those risks and how it's affecting our budget approach, which hasn't changed. It has always been conservative. We analyze the revenues and resources coming in, and from there determine how much we can spend of those available funds in order to maintain core services and continue expanding programming and other capital initiatives, for example, the West Las Vegas Library Project. And this approach has stood the test of time. It's gotten the library district through a housing crash, a financial crisis, a great recession, and under Executive Directors Watson's leadership, since the pandemic, the district has maintained its financial stability and also is building a brand new library, even in a financially challenging climate. And I mentioned the cost controls that we will be implementing this year, which again is not new. The district is always diligent in looking at costs and, like I said, balancing available resources with maintaining long-term financial health and continuing to expand, as I, I just mentioned. That's done in services and supplies. You know, that's an item that increases every year because of core contracts that increase, you know, as part of the agreements. And we also take a close look at personnel costs. And a very good question was raised about how personnel costs are being evaluated, especially in the current year, because we're budgeting for fiscal year 2026, but we're also taking action in fiscal 2025 to ensure that the budget will accommodate our needs for not just fiscal year 2026, but beyond. And with spec, with respective personnel costs, I mentioned that, you know, we are looking at vacant positions in particular, which is something that we can control in order to produce or make resources available for upcoming years. And I wanted to clarify that there's not a hiring freeze at this time. The district always maintains a certain level of vacancies throughout the year compared to the budget. We budget personnel costs at 100%, assuming that, that assumes that all positions are filled throughout the entire fiscal year, which is not the case. There's natural turnover throughout the year, and those vacancies that are available are evaluated, not just to determine filling them, but how we fill them. For example, throughout the pandemic, again, under the director's guidance, we were being more innovative in how we utilize vacant positions. We filled them as needed, but we took the opportunity in library operations, for example, to take vacant positions and combine them or convert them to positions that better suit the programming that we're offering, which changes, you know, over time. And in some cases, that provides a cost savings compared to the budget. So that's just an example of our mindset and our approach to budgeting at all times. That's our, that's our game plan for budgeting. It's just that with the circumstances we're facing today and the risks to federal funding sources, a potential economic downturn, or any other emergency that is impossible to predict, we're keeping that in mind as we continue to discuss the, the budget. The executive director and chief financial officer are the fiscal agents of the library district, you know, responsible for ensuring the district's financial health and that all financial operations align with the mission, and again, long-term financial stability, which is always the goal. And so with the Finance and Audit Committee, we presented, you know, these risks and how we're addressing them in the current fiscal year. And I can take any questions.
Any questions for the executive records report?
Thank you. Speaking about the budget, you had said that you guys, that the library has, right now, has 72 vacant positions, and that if you hold those positions until June 30th, we would have a savings of $4.5 million. So my question to you is, knowing that the CT tax, you know, is, we don't know where it's going to be in the future. At what point, and I, and right now, things are good. At what point do we as a board need to know, like, what, what is the triggering point where you say, okay, you know what? Things are a little strange. I, I know that at your finance meeting, you had said that some of the numbers were not entirely correct because they had not finished. For, for whatever reason, there was some cycle problem with getting you the numbers, you know, for the entire term. And so I just, I just want to be proactive, and I'm just asking you, what is that trigger?
Yes, thank you, trustee Sanchez. That's a great question, and we discussed it somewhat in the finance committee meeting in that, again, just quickly going back to our budget approach, another element of the budget is to ensure there's a certain amount of reserves available for these types of challenges. It got us through the pandemic era, and that was a clear example of a trigger. We knew that the economy was going to shut down for who knows how long, and that those sales taxes would not only come in under, but would fall off a cliff, which is what happened. And so again, that's the extreme example of we staff came to the board to ask for approval of a voluntary employee separation program, which encouraged long-term employees to separate or retire from the district. That produced a savings in our reserve, and we broke even quickly, fortunately, there. But that's the type of action that would be brought to the board. Chair Wa actually, you know, asked about that specific example. Here, even though we are facing risks and we don't know the trend in sales tax, to your point, because of, you know, technical difficulties with the state's reporting system, we still can make a forecast and expect the C-tex to stay flat. This is also based on data that the state was able to provide. But in the event that, as we go along, month to month, that the sales tax revenues drop even more significantly, again, the executive director, you know, the chief financial officer and administrative team would take a closer look at our spending, and that's where we may consider things like not filling positions in order to generate savings. That's what we did when the vest, the voluntary employee separation program was implemented. But because of our healthy reserve, we are able to withstand some of the risks that we're facing. A $6 million loss in federal funding would be extreme. Like, if something like that happened and executive orders prevented us from collecting the remaining amount available for the new markets program, that wouldn't stop the West Las Vegas project from being completed, because again, we're prepared for these types of financial challenges, but it would affect capital initiatives down the road, and that's where we would be monitoring the climate, you know, how our revenue is coming in now, what does our fund balance look like? And again, going back to a reserve is insured or planned for in the budget to make that available. It's difficult to determine if there are any other trigger points that would take us, would encourage a district to take more action and to come to the board. encourage a district to take more action and to come to the board, but we would continue reporting, you know, as always.
Yeah. For the record, what is the amount of the reserve?
It is budgeted at 15% of total expenditures. That's a rule of thumb that staff has considered a safe reserve. In the past, the Government Accounting Standards Board, you know, provides guidance on this, and it used to be 5%, but that's at a time when the financial climate wasn't nearly as challenging as it has been. During the pandemic, we actually maintained a 20% reserve of total expenditures, and that in recent years has amounted to $15 million. And again, the budget is designed to be conservative, so it is crafted to produce a 15% reserve of about $15 million. But we expect savings. So it's conservative in that, in example of personnel costs, we budget at 100%, but we expect vacancies. We can control how they're filled and we can manage the amount of savings compared to the budget there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, I know our Floresto had one other update, but I wanted to also just open up to see if there were any reports that any of the trustees wanted to pull to ask any questions.
I wanted to talk about the Human Resources Report, if possible.
Bullet.
Good evening. Vice Chair Rogers, Director Cabias, Trustees. Jeffrey Serpico, for the record, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening. How are you?
How are you doing?
Good. So I had a question because, you know, I sat in on the budget meeting. I wanted to ask you, how are we going as far as, are we, right now, you have positions and it's not that they're on hold or anything like that, but I guess my question is, is I saw that there was a business and development position, and I was wondering if you could tell us more about that position and what the salary is on that?
The Director of Business and Development, which is a new position, but it's not development. It's business strategy and planning. It replaced the Director of Development, that position, based on organizational need. I believe the salary range is around 136 to 181, which is the same as the Director of Development. And you'll hear a little bit more about that position as Floresto introduces the the person who filled the position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the job description is also available online, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I would like to introduce that new member of the administrative team now. That would be Dr. Rosalind Dean. She was previously the Regional Manager under Library Operations, and she is now the new Business Strategies and Planning Director. She brings to the district a wealth of knowledge and experience, and her credentials are very impressive, but I'll let Dr. Dean tell you a little bit more about herself and her vision for business strategies and planning. Roz, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. So again, for the record, I'm Dr. Rosalind Dean, and I am the new Business Strategies and Planning Director. So I did want to give you a little bit of information or tell you a little bit about my background. And to keep it kind of concise, I'm going to go ahead and read it to you. So with over 21 years of experience in the library industry, I bring a comprehensive and diverse background in public service and library operations. Prior to assuming my current role as Business Strategies and Planning Director, I served as the Library Operations Regional Manager with the Library District for more than three and a half years. Before joining the Library District, I was the Community Engagement Manager for the Broward County Library, where I led initiatives to strengthen library community, library and community connections. My library industry career began on the technology side, where I spent fourteen years progress in progressively responsible roles within Integrated Library System Software Development Company. During that time, I trained library professionals worldwide, including here in the United States, in Spain, Singapore, Australia, the UK, and Canada on implementation and optimization of integrated library systems. My twenty-year, twenty-eight-year career in, is a 360-degree reflection of my lifelong commitment to public service. I began my career as a middle school teacher in a Title I school. I later taught adult literacy as an adult basic education and GED instructor. I also served as a Program Director for Child Abuse Prevention Agency. I worked as an outreach coordinator for the Florida State University College of Medicine, where I recruited middle and high school students to mentor and tutor them in math and science, well before STEM was an acronym. I am enthusiastic about shaping the future of this role and contributing to the continued growth and impact of the Library District in service to our community. So to tell you a little bit about the direction of the role, so currently there is the Grants Court, the Development Coordinator, who oversees our grants that will move under this department. And then we also plan to have a Government Affairs position that will cover some of the role that was, or some of the things that the previous Development Director did in terms of staying connected to our local, state, and federal entities and in terms of making sure we're advocating and for the Library District and keeping abreast of what's happening in those arenas, as well as in the community. And then there's a third part, which is the newest part of this role, which I've, we've defined as organizational oversight. So under organizational oversight, we will look at operational efficiency, we'll look at change management processes, we'll look at organizational waste and how we can improve that as we're talking about the budget. So those are some of the things. And of course, the most important part is the strategic plan. Any questions for me?
Any questions, trustees?
No, I just want to say welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. Looking forward to what you produce in your new role.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service so far to the district. Thank you.
And then I would, any trustees want to call any other report?
Can we have the BAM, I guess, and community? I don't know. I don't know. I kind of go to everyone, but I just feel like we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge the sixtieth anniversary of the district and the incredible work from programming to operations events to marketing to earned media coverage that you guys succeeded in achieving for the district. I was especially heartened to see that that coverage not only resulted in this really awesome cover story on the Las Vegas Weekly, which is terrific. It's vibrant. It shows so much about, about the district. As a communications professional, I couldn't be happier with the way that this turned out, and I hope you guys are as well. I also want to extend a special shout out to you guys for being outside of Las Vegas. It was really cool to see some clips coming from Laughlin and really talk about the services that we're giving to the people that are living down there. I think that's really important. And then to the Ops Team, it also, the events, the sixth through the twelfth were fantastic. My kids and I enjoyed them. And then the Memory Lab is something interesting. I'm always heartened by following along the social media, honestly, and seeing all the programming that's happening everywhere. If anyone in Las Vegas is bored, they are not following us on Instagram. So thanks, everyone. Really great job.
All right. Well, I would like to call Mr. Vino to just give us, not necessarily pulling anything from your report, but just if you just give us a verbal update on how the, our new library is progressing.
West Vegas is it's been, knock on wood, progressing on schedule. We are on schedule to be substantially complete in October. We've had no hiccups with deliveries or impact in the supply chain. We have one ongoing issue that is very topical, I guess you would say. It's time, we've ordered our, our LED sign. And we I've delayed the delivery of the LED sign until the tariffs have been worked out. Right now, we would owe a substantial amount of money if our LED sign was to land in California based on the current tariffs. So we have time. We really don't need it to June, July. So it's just something we're monitoring, but it's, other than that, you know, Core's been great to work with, the whole team, everybody working on the site. Happy to give tours, too. If everybody, anybody would like to come, to come by, we would appreciate it. It's good to see it now as, you know, the walls are up, sheet rocks up, we're actually painting, tiles going in. You know, we're getting to that point where you really get the feel of the library itself. We're out with bids for the furniture and equipment went out this week. So we're dealing with that portion of the project, which is really the last big hurdle for the project itself, getting that in place. Not trying to whitewash it. It actually is moving along at a pretty good, pretty good pace.
Thank you, Mr. Vino. Great job managing the project. Oh.
Is there, is there any concern? You mentioned the tariffs and the LED sign. I know that we build in contingency lines for those, but is there any concern as other pieces start to come in that these tariffs are
All our other pieces are in place, all right. Our bigger equipment, we ordered in advance of the project. So, you know, our big air conditioning systems, everything's in place. There's no big dollar items other than the LED sign, and the LED sign isn't, you know, it's a big number, but it's not anything that would break the bank. It's just kind of annoying at this point. We're just going to wait and see. And then we have to anticipate six weeks out, so it's not when I order it to be delivered, it's when it lands. So we anticipate, we're just going to wait a little bit of time. We have the time to just kind of monitor where things are, and we'll order it at the appropriate time.
Thanks for keeping tabs on that.
No, no, thank you.
I wanted to ask, where is the LED coming from?
It's, I, I just found out. I guess it's manufactured in China.
Okay. And then my other question is regarding the furniture, are you ordering it in the country or is it going to come from somewhere else?
It's more, I did check today, almost all of it is, it's from all over. It's twenty different, twenty-two different bid groups. But most of it is manufactured in the United States, so we don't anticipate any delays or any, any issues along those lines.
Or additional costs.
Additional costs, tariffs coming in, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. I do encourage my fellow trustees to go and take advantage of when they do those weekly tours.
Yeah, I'm there every Tuesday, if that's convenient. If not, just let me know. Happy to make special arrangements. It's, it's worth a half hour to walk around and I love showing it off, so just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Trustee.
Before you leave, if we have no more questions on this library, I have a question on the Good Springs Library. That's close to my heart. It looks as if the plans have changed.
No, no, we closed actually. We own the property effective April second. We're moving forward with the county. It's going to be a process. I don't really have at this point a, a timeline for the conversion. It has its own challenges. We'll have to buy some water rights. We'll have to convert to commercial property versus residential. Again, nothing that is earth-shattering. It's just a timeline to work through with the county. They've been great to work with so far, and you know, we'll just just started the process since this is our first week owning it, but the intent is to open it up, you know, as residential, so it has three bedrooms. We'll keep one of the bedrooms for a staff office. We have to create an ADA restroom, and then we'll probably open up the space to create maker spaces. We'll have a youth area. We'll have, be able to have a a maker space area. We'll have to put ADA porches in and, and, you know, along the front and a parking lot, but you know, it's, we've already started that whole process. It's, again, it's just a process. So hoping six months, I will certainly keep the board informed monthly in my board report and if I can, in May, if we have some drawings, I'll bring them forward and show you what, what our plans are for the property as well.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank, sure.
Yes, I have a quick question. You mentioned Tuesday, but you didn't mention what time. Are you there all day or is there a specific?
I'm there usually from eight to eleven, but anytime. You know, we have a standard construction meeting from, from nine to 10, and then we typically do tours right around 10 o'clock, but just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Vino. All right. We have any other questions related to any other reports? All right. That was for information only. We will transition to our new, our unfinished business. I don't think we have anything listed there, so we'll go to
You have to accept, you have to accept the reports.
Oh, do we have a motion to accept the reports that's presented?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Reports are accepted. Thank you, Councilman Welp. We will go to unfinished business. We don't have any items under unfinished business, which leads us to Agenda Item Number Eight, New Business, and we can do the consent agenda. We can do all four. One, two, all three items as one consent, if there are no concerns. Otherwise, we can do them one at a time.
I don't have any concerns, but I do have a question on number three, which is discussion and board action regarding authorization for staff to negotiate and execute a lease with the Bureau of Land Management for the site development at Hollywood Park. I just would like some information on that, please.
Good evening again. John Vino, General Services Director. I could answer.
Yes, if you could just go over some background and kind of where you're at with it. I mean, I know that you're going to negotiate a lease. Is the lease coming back to us? Or are you just negotiating it and just give us some background?
The agenda item is strictly a request from the BLM for board support for the project itself. This is something we've been working on since before 2001, 2021, sorry. It's just been a process. The PaaS Facilities Master Report on our strategic plan identified that area as kind of a need. Our Sunrise Library is overloaded in terms of its patron base versus its square footage. So this is an area we've been looking at. Actually, Trustee Ortiz was instrumental. We had looked at quite a bit of properties. We identified these 12 acres owned by the BLM quite a few years ago, started the process. We've been just working through the different requirements that they've, they've had. I'm hoping actually that this is the last one. Our lease is typically $5 a year, so it's not a financial obligation. Our obligation there is to have a development plan and work with BLM. This would come to the board more in terms of when we start programming, you know, we would need board, board support for this to be our next project per se, when we're ready to move ahead with a new development, you know, and we would discuss with the board. You know, why we would choose it, and then the board would have to give us permission to develop it as, as a full library. This is more of a permission just to kind of secure that site so we could bring it back to the board as one of our future development sites, which we're, we're trying to, you know, based on our facilities master plan, there's three or four areas that we need to have future sites available.
Well, I think this is a very exciting development, and I just wanted to know, when you execute a lease with the Bureau of Land Management, how long is the lease typically?
It, it's been 20 years in the past. We've had quite a few, you know, successful programs with the BLM. They've been great to work with, just working through their, their different requirements.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes, as you work through this particular project, I would really like to be very integral in the whole process. Not only do I happen to live on that side of town, I am also on the Town Advisory Board Committee up there. And so, matter of fact, we have a meeting at six thirty tonight. So we just finished approving a substation up there, so they just started a metro substation near that same particular site. So it's dear to my heart because I've lived up there for the last 20-plus years.
And I'm really excited. I mean, this, this is, it's some really great land. It's between, you know, we're sandwiched between schools or right across from the the park. It's, I'm, I'm really hoping we can move forward with this and secure this and, and then work with the board, you know. and, and then work with the board, you know, to either start programming or, you know, see what's next for that property.
I really appreciate it because my, my kids attended and went to the Sunrise Library a lot. So I, it's well overdue.
If, if it does go through, our next step would be asking permission to start programming. Doesn't mean that will be our next, you know, project that would be up to the board. But I, I do have a budget line item to hire someone to do some library programs. So we could, as, as a team, discuss, you know, what, what is a library up in that area? What are the needs? Are we going to have multipurpose rooms? Does it need a theater? So we would need to work really through that process. And that, that could take a little bit of time too, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The presentation that you gave us too was great. It's absolutely fascinating to look at the 2040 branch service area population graph and just see what's ahead and knowing how far in advance you're looking at things like this is really comforting.
And we, and we do have, that's based on one that was created in 2017. We are and will be presenting hopefully a new demographic that we, we're trying to see what has changed over the next 10 years and we'll bring that forward to the board appropriately.
It's just, it's really illuminating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the consenting items? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the items as a package?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We will transition to Agenda Item 8B, our regular agenda item. And we will go to, I mean, Floresto, are you leading this?
Yes. We just discussed the federal New Markets Tax Credit Program. And Foundation Treasurer Fred James, you know, described the role that the foundation plays. And it's an important one. And we talked about how funds from the district flows through the foundation. And the role is especially important because they are a nonprofit organization that can serve in that role as opposed to the Library District, who cannot because we are a quasi-local government entity. Another important nonprofit corporation that is a library affiliate is what we call the Qualic B, a qualified active low-income community business. And the role of this nonprofit corporation is to actually hold title to our library projects. We previously had two other Qualics Bs for the East Las Vegas Library and the Mesquite Library Campus. That started seven years ago and we raised $6 million for East Las Vegas under this program and $2 million for Mesquite. And after meeting the seven-year compliance period, it's for the Qualic B to pass or transfer ownership of those library buildings back to the Library District. And so, and that happened within the last 12 months. You know, we unwound is the term for unwinding the transaction and transferring all assets of those nonprofit corporations back to the Library District. And you can see the importance of the composition of the board of these nonprofit corporations because it requires Qualic B Board action to transfer these assets. And you'll see in the agenda item, the requirements for how those boards are composed. There is a requirement that three of the directors of that board are directly related individuals. In the case of the West Las Vegas Qualic B, that would include Vice Chair Rogers, Secretary Hiron, and myself representing staff that is responsible for the daily management of the Qualic B's operations. Another requirement under tax law is that the remaining two directors are independent, but they can be friends of the library. And so in this case, that would be former trustees, Michael Saunders and Senator Mo Dennis. These individuals have participated on other Qualic Bs. And again, together, we took action to transfer the East Las Vegas Library and Mesquite Library Campus back to the district. And I just emphasize that this structure, the composition of the board is intentional in that the parties I mentioned between myself, Dr. Rogers and Secretary Hiron makes up a voting majority. Not that we're concerned because the other individuals on the board are friends of the library. And we've shown that this process works and that, you know, again, it's designed to, for everyone to meet expectations. But every year, the Board of Trustees appoints the individuals of these boards. And as I mentioned, we dissolved or are planning to dissolve the East Las Vegas and Mesquite Qualic B. But the West Las Vegas Qualic B will exist for another seven years to meet the compliance requirements of the New Markets Transactions. So I wanted to provide that overview for the trustees. Again, this is routine. It's, it happens every year, but it's for the Board of Trustees to determine and review, approve the designation or appointment of these directors every year. And so with that, staff is recommending that the Board of Trustees appoint the individuals described to the Board of Directors of the West Las Vegas Qualic B.
Any questions, Trustees?
I have a question. If someone on this slate is no longer a trustee, what is the next step from that?
Staff would bring a proposal for another director, meeting the requirements outlined here, to appoint to the Qualic B Board. And similar to what we're doing now, if that happened mid-year, we would ask the board to approve appointment of a new director that meets these requirements.
Okay.
Trustee what?
I don't have a question.
Now I have a question.
Trustee Sanchez?
Do, and forgive me for asking, but does the Qualic B, do they have like a bylaws or something like that? So that way that's, do they have that or is that necessary?
Yes, it is. They are officially incorporated in the state of Nevada as a nonprofit. And so they do have an Articles of Incorporation bylaws. And that's where these conditions for appointing board members are outlined.
Okay, great. That's, that was my only question. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Do we need a vote?
Yes, we will need a motion to, yes, we will need a motion to appoint the slate of officers and directors detailed above to the West Las Vegas Qualic B Incorporated Board of Directors.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And I do not believe we have anything for executive session, do we?
No, but I did want to sort of answer what Fred said. Hopefully Lori Thompson, the Executive Director, myself had our last meeting today to go over our proposal and we anticipate forwarding that to the foundation and their council next week.
Thank you for that update. Any questions related to what Councilman Welp shared in terms of sort of next steps in engaging the foundation with the agreement?
No, just that I hope that we have a, some type of presentation at some point where, you know, we understand the intricacies of everything because I know they're working on it now, so.
Yes, trustee.
Prior to that agreement, will we have an opportunity to kind of look over that? I mean, agreement or look it over so that we can have some educated questions if we have some versus just a presentation? And then trying to figure out our questions or comments.
Yeah, my understanding expectation is that once both parties meet and reach some agreement, then that will come back to this board as well as their board to make sure that there's a full presentation questions. And then we would obviously have to vote to approve the agreement.
Okay, so we will have time to review it prior to a presentation.
Absolutely. My understanding is going to be sort of a two-part. The first part is identifying sort of what the relationship between the two entities will be first. And then the second part of that will then be determining what financial arrangements need to be put in place to ensure that both parties are able to fulfill their responsibilities in the new agreement. Okay, well, we will go to announcements and just the three announcements are there. I won't read those. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
No, we do not. And for the record, Attorney Welp is present via Zoom.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion carries. Everyone have a great rest of the night. I'm going to get to the Golden Knights game.
Good for you.
Go Knights!
Go Knights!
You're a busy man.